Savage City Council meeting to order. Roll call. Mayor Kelly?
Here.
Council members Bergstrom?
Yeah.
Coughlin?
Present.
Craig's?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
For the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Second item is public comments. The mayor and the city council believe public comments are a necessary component to elected governance. With this principle in mind, we welcome individuals to come to the podium to inform us on an issue or provide feedback or concerns about matters in Savage. Please come to the podium, provide your name and address, and we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. I do not think we have anybody for that. So we will move on to additions, modifications, and approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or modifications?
No changes from staff, mayor.
Council? With that, I will entertain a motion for approval.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Third.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Bergstrom. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Proclamations, there are none this evening. Presentations, we will start with a presentation from the League of Minnesota Cities 2025 City of Excellence Award to Savage. I will turn it over to you, Luke.
Wonderful. Good evening, mayor, members of the council. My name is Luke Fisher, and I'm the executive director at the League of Minnesota Cities. I'm joined tonight by my colleague and our CFO, our new CFO, John McCarthy. We're here tonight to recognize you for a wonderful award you got at our annual conference this year. And you know all about it, and you know all about us, but we want to make sure that the public knows this really good news, too. Now, anytime you get recognition from someone, I think it's helpful to know who you're getting it from, and you all know us well, so you're not really the audience here. I'm hoping that people at home know a little bit more about who we are so they can recognize the significance of the award that you got. So the League of Minnesota Cities is an association. We represent 841 of the state's 856 cities. Our largest member is the city of Minneapolis, and our smallest member is the city of Berry. Any guesses on Berry's population?
Nineteen.
Fifteen.
Fifteen, nineteen. I feel like the mayor has been doing some homework here, because it's actually nineteen people, so congratulations. No one has ever guessed that the right way before, I'll tell you that much. Whenever I share that fact, though, people say, "Well, where is Berry?" And I say, "It's out by Wheaton." And people say, "Well, where the heck is Wheaton?" And I say, "It's by Morris." And they say, "Where the heck is Morris?" And then I say, "It's by the bump on the western side of the state." But as an association, we provide services to Minneapolis, Savage, and Berry, and all points in between, and we do that in a myriad of ways. So every year, we handle about 8,500 insurance claims on behalf of our members. We answer about 7,000 questions from city officials across the state. We see about 3,000 people at our events. We put on about 28, I think, last year, so that's one almost every other week, right? And we have one guy, just one guy in our office, that reviewed 1,500 contracts on behalf of our members. That scope, I think, is important for you all to know about and for people at home to know about, because we get to see everything that happens across our state. And we get to see some really cool and creative projects, and our award really focuses on lifting up the very best of the best. And that's something that we're really excited to do here tonight. So my colleague, John, is going to talk a little bit about your award, and we're going to watch a video about it if that's all right with you.
Thank you.
So, good evening. As Luke said, I'm John McCarthy. I'm the CFO for the League of Minnesota Cities. I'm here tonight to recognize the city of Savage for winning a 2025 League of Minnesota Cities City of Excellence Award. The award was first presented to Savage at the league's annual conference last month in Duluth. The City of Excellence Awards annually recognize projects and programs that enhance city services, introduce innovative solutions, adapt existing programs to local needs, save money while maintaining or improving results, or engage citizens and staff decision-making. The Addressing Safety in the Park project that we are honoring today is a great example of a thoughtful collaborative approach to taking on troubling safety incidents in a neighborhood park. It proves that local government is at its best when it listens in response to the unique needs of its residents. Your execution of a comprehensive community plan to address safety concerns in Riverbend Park showed a level of organization and transparency that inspired confidence among residents. This approach resulted in strong resident participation in the problem-solving process. Community members felt heard, and they could all work toward the shared goal of keeping kids safe. Another reason that your project is award-worthy is that the city delivered concrete results because of the plan and the process. You followed through with your promise. Investments in Riverbend Park infrastructure and amenities made the park safer and more community-friendly. Successful projects like yours require hard work, commitment, and enthusiasm amongst all involved. This desk plaque, which we hope you will display proudly, is a reminder that a citywide team effort produces successful results. So we're going to see what some of the staff in your city had to say about safety in the park. The video you're about to see was first shown at the league's annual conference, and it's now publicly accessible on YouTube. Perfect, thank you.
In Public Works, we take care of all of our parks throughout Savage. Whether it's mowing, it's taking care of the weeds, it's trimming the trees, it's inspecting the playgrounds, it's making sure that our parks are safe, comfortable, and enjoyable for all residents here in our community.
We're at Riverbend Park. It's one of Savage's 23 parks here in our community. It's a great little neighborhood park. It has basketball courts, fields, a playground. So we had two shootings at Riverbend Park within a few weeks of each other, which understandably got the neighborhood upset.
It's very unusual to have drive-by shooting within the city of Savage. There was immediate concern of the neighborhood and the groups that use the park, safety within the park. And that's when we all got together and wanted to make a good decision on how we can keep our community safe.
So we had facilitated small group discussions. We first trained all of our staff about how to hold these facilitated discussions. It was all hands-on-deck process for us. We had staff from all of our different departments participate in this.
We established community trusts by bringing in those stakeholders that are engaged in the park. Not only met with our neighborhoods, but those that used the park, the businesses, and the school district, all came together.
We went to one of the townhome associations where we knew that there was a lot of kids that would come over and use the park. So we set up shop there. What I think really made a difference is that we engaged with some community liaisons from the school district to help us get the word out and talk to the community members.
Probably the biggest challenge was to make sure that every voice was heard, making sure that everybody felt welcome, that they didn't feel like their voice was going to get drowned out. And that happens a lot with our group, with our community, where we have people with all different skill sets, whether a skill set in speaking English or not speaking English very well, making sure that everybody knew their voice was important.
Things were upgraded here, such as more lighting. They just redid the parking lot for safety concerns. The basketball hoops were put up, and there is plans to put fencing up so that if the basketball were to get away from the basketball court and into the street, we want to prevent that from happening, too.
We worked with our law enforcement to look at a project called SEPTED, Crime Prevention by Environmental Design. And one of the things was opening up visual lanes for our police officers as they're driving by, as they're stopping by. They can see who's in our park. We've got more to come, and we're going to be listening to our residents to figure out what do they want in their park for enjoyment, for safety, but really overall for the enjoyment for all of our community members here.
This one mistake is stopping you.
The weight loss stuff isn't ours.
So to go off script for a second here, just want to say, I know how hard, you know, I used to, I worked in a city prior to coming to the league. I know how hard it is to accomplish projects like this. It's incredibly impressive, the work that Savage did to be successful here. So we want to congratulate you, to the city of Savage, for a job well done. You're highly deserving of the 2025 City of Excellence Award.
Thank you. I'm also going to take a moment to thank the league, and we always refer to you as "the league" instead of "the League of Minnesota Cities." But the training that you provide to us and the knowledge, the resources, you know, is incredible, but I just want to highlight the training. I know some of our council members have taken advantage of that, and it is just a wonderful way to engage with other elected leaders and to learn how to do this job, because it's really different than any other job they've probably ever had. And so I just wanted to thank you for that.
Thank you, we appreciate that. Can we get a picture with you guys?
Absolutely. Thank you. All right, now we will move on to item B, the 2024 Liquor Operations Annual Report.
Good evening, mayor, council, and audience here and at home. My name's James Cooklock. I'm the operations manager for the Savage Liquor Department. And I'm here to review our 2024 results. The city of Savage has been in the liquor business since the repeal of prohibition over 90 years ago. The city operates two stores, Marketplace Liquor on 8200 at County Road 42, as well as Savage Wine and Spirits. Municipal liquor department allows greater control over liquor and cannabis being sold and consumed in their cities and to diversify the sources of revenue, generating profits to benefit the community. Over $1.5 million is put back into the community. And you can see the personnel structure of the liquor department there in the graphic. Our objective for the liquor department, Savage Liquor, is dedicated to serving the community through convenient locations, knowledgeable staff, and competitive pricing. The Savage Municipal Liquor operation exists as a means to which to control the sale of alcoholic beverages and cannabis products while providing revenue and services back into the community. As we look at our revenues and expenditures on both personnel and inventory, we continue to see sales at a level, since about 2020, when we saw a huge spike based on the COVID pandemic. Average sales have been about $6.3 million since 2017, and we expect to see this trend continue in the future. Expect to see the product costs go up some in the future due to inflation, and personnel will go up as well as we have in '25 implemented a compensation study and some new benefits in terms of E S S T through the state of Minnesota. If we look at comparing 2024 versus 2023, we look at the big four categories in the liquor department, and that would be liquor, wine, beer, and cannabis. Small sales, we've seen small sales drops in beer, liquor, and wine, and we attribute that somewhat to Gen Z is drinking over 20% less alcohol than other generations did at that very same age. Total transaction numbers, though, are flat or relatively flat, 248,924, 248,500 roughly in 2023. We're seeing some trends that non-alcohol and low alcohol drinks are going mainstream. THC sales continued their upward trend as customers are becoming more aware of availability and product diversity increases. We currently only carry THC drinks, and there has been some interest in exploring the sale of edibles as well.
Mayor and council, I'd like to add one thing to the THC information. So $192,000 was for 2024 total. Currently, year-to-date in 2025, we're at $174,000. So it looks like we will continue to see those sale numbers increases there for THC. So really kind of interesting growing market we have.
And I think we started selling the THC products in 2023, right?
That's correct, mayor.
So that comparison is not a full year of sales in 2023?
So mayor and council, the 2023 number, we annualized that.
Oh, okay.
So we basically took the quarter of sales we had, times that by four, to give us more of a light comparison.
Got it.
So we're consistently seeing that growing trend go up.
Okay.
In addition to that, we do have a very strong THC education program for our employees so that they're giving the best advice to customers as they come into the store. Inventory balance, we're trying to, our goal is to keep that around 12% to 15% of total annual sales, and we'll see slight bumps in that as we see product costs go up slightly, but we're very aware and diligent in holding to that number. Gross profit percentage, in 2023, the average metro municipal gross profit percentage was 27.9%. 2023 for Savage was 28.3%. So we have just a little bit ahead of what the metro is seeing.
Mayor and council, I'd like to note, this was a change since what you got in the packet. We recognized we had the wrong number. I think we just switched something. So better news for what we initially sent out. So I just, James is spotlighting the fact that we are a little bit above the market in terms of our gross profit, so.
So it's actually 27.9?
Yep.
James, Chris, can you also explain why we're looking at 2023 numbers and we don't have the comparisons for the other communities?
Yep. Mayor and council, so this is based on the audited state report from Julie Blaha's office. So we are always kind of a year behind in looking at that. This year, we were particularly behind, because they normally release it January, February, I think it came out.
April.
April, May. So that's why you're seeing this report now as opposed to April, I think last year's when we gave this update. So we're always kind of comparing one year behind with 2024, I would say, unaudited numbers, where our auditor looked at it, but we haven't had the state review it yet. So we believe these numbers are pretty true, but there may be a little bit of a change, so.
Just a clarification, the audited, when we talk about unaudited, again, I just want to repeat what you said, is the Minnesota audit, not our individual city's audit, because that has come down.
Mayor, that's correct.
Thank you.
2024 unaudited gross profit percentage for Savage was 27, a little bit over 27%. So kind of staying right within our pocket there. If we look at net income, 2023 net operating income as a percent of sales among metro municipal liquor operations was 7.2%. Savage's, however, was, as a percent of sales, was 10%. So very, very good cost control, very good purchasing control as well, and that's reflected in that number. We estimate in 2024, net operating income as a percent of sales was 7.03% for Savage. Again, due to, do a little bit more to the compensation study and a little bit of the rising costs in our inventory purchases. Expect to see, though, over $350,000 in net income each year moving forward, and we certainly exceeded that in 2023, and we'll be over that number again in 2024. Accomplishments in 2024, the marketplace cooler was fitted for new gravity feed racks to better serve customers. Gravity feed racks are what bring the cool products down to the customer, and we had some very old equipment in there, which was frustrating somewhat for our customer and very difficult to maintain for the employees. So this was a fantastic investment, and we've received some excellent feedback that we made that change. We also, at Marketplace, I think maybe the most exciting thing was we added the ADA automatic doors, and that generated a significant amount of positive feedback from our customers. Entering the store became much easier for all, and leaving the store with large purchases was significantly more convenient. Marketplace's floor space was substantially altered to include more attractive displays and much easier customer flow. And again, we get that feedback almost on a daily basis, that customers really like the open feel and the ease of shopping. A new loyalty program was established at Savage Liquor and with administrative cost savings, those were significant, simplified employee and customer use, and increased loyalty program member satisfaction. 24 accomplishments continued here on this slide. We also installed a new office cubicle at the SWS location. Previously, we have a picture of it up there. Previously, it was just a desk with a couple of stools in front of it, and this professionalized it considerably.
I say, mayor and council, if you hadn't seen it beforehand, we're now having meetings and stuff there. It's a great place for us to meet with vendors, talk with other people, talk with staff. Before it, literally was a desk, a chair, and there was just like stuff around it. So it's really, it's nice. Staff has been really responsive to your support for that CIP item, and it's just fundamentally kind of changed how staff operates in that store.
Absolutely. He's got visual lines to the counter, the store manager who works out of that location, and now our meetings can actually be held in-store, where in the past, we actually had to leave and go to a different location. So that keeps the store manager on hand for anything that might come up, even while we're $1.5 million of profits have been put back into the community since 2020. We've installed, well, I think it was in 2024, actually, we installed the police boilers, HR office space facilities, assessment, skate park, library mural, sports center debt, and monument sign funding, all kinds of positive additions to the community and to the city.
I'm going to add to that. The thing that isn't mentioned here is that it was the liquor store that paid the library bonds. I'll remind everybody at home that the city of Savage built our own library. It's how it works in Scott County, is we have to build the building, and the bonds were paid through the liquor funds.
Excellent. We've hosted and partnered with the community on many special events and fundraisers. Both stores experienced very low employee turnover. This is very exciting for us. A more experienced, knowledgeable staff provides better service, more efficient operational duties, and increased employee satisfaction. Very strong team atmospheres at both stores. Council can expect quarterly reports from the liquor department moving forward as well.
One item I also wanted to note, so in 2023, we had a finding on the audit for inventory that was actually taken off for 2024. I think James and his team have done a spectacular job of solving for that issue. Part of that was our point-of-sale system, which we've kind of integrated, and it's working really well. So again, something, we're just seeing good, positive trends from this team.
And that was the city's private audit.
The private auditor found the inventory.
As opposed to the state municipal liquor audit.
Thank you, mayor, yes. Thanks for that clarifying statement.
We've seen some trends in the liquor industry as a whole. This is both national, it's statewide, and we're seeing it at our very own stores as well. Canned and premixed cocktails are giving consumers a step up from just hard seltzer, which was very explosive a few years ago. The COVID effect has disappeared. Consumers have more destination options to drink and are spending less on premium products to drink at home. THC-based product sales continue to rise industry-wide. Single-serve sales, especially beer, have increased significantly, and we have a picture there of a cooler that we've dedicated at the Marketplace location specifically for single-serve because it's been so explosive. We have some challenges ahead, and we look forward to them. We're going to meet them positively, and we have changing patterns in consumption. This is very different than what we've seen over the last several years. It's a very competitive liquor market. Savage Liquor has several competitors along our bordering cities. Ongoing maintenance of Marketplace's physical building costs money, and we are currently making those changes, and that will set us up very well for the long term. Nipping that off now versus waiting for the big expenditure is the prudent thing to do, and that's what we're doing. Inventory allocation is challenging as customer preferences are becoming significantly different from long-term history of the industry. We have two excellent managers who stay on top of these trends, and we meet often to make sure that we're offering to the consumer exactly what the trends are that they're looking for and not being bogged down by old buying habits. Macroeconomic trends obviously directly impact discretionary consumer spending, and that's a challenge for us. So we will meet that with intelligent sales, excellent service, and using our loyalty program as a means for incentive for our loyalty customers to get a better deal and come back to our stores.
Can I ask a question on the inventory allocation? I noticed that, because we had it come up in the audit, that the inventory has been increasing. So in 2023, the inventory balance was 886,000, and then it jumped to a million, and now it's 1,046,000. I know that was cleared in this year's audit, but I just want to ask, the inventory balance going up, is that a concern we should have? I mean, I'm concerned, I'm concerned, about the inventory balance going up when that has been an issue for us in the past.
I think what we've seen is some of our core product costs have gone up.
Okay.
A lot. And so what we're doing, rather than attacking that directly, is working on the periphery and making sure that we're not sitting on product that's not turning.
Okay.
We have, again, a couple excellent managers who are very aware of the age of their inventories, and we use some pretty aggressive strategies to make sure that we're ridding ourselves of that and focusing on those things that sell.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome, mayor. Future opportunities that we're very excited about, customers are increasingly using remote methods to shop via website and phone app shopping. Savage Liquor is exploring several options to meet this need while considering costs, which can be significant, convenience, and ease of use for the customer. As we look here into fall and winter of '25, we expect to have something implemented so that we can really take advantage of this trend. Something that is a very common phrase in the liquor industry is, "If it's cold, it's sold." And that's a common adage referring to the customer's preference for cold beverages at the time of purchase. We have invested in more self-serve coolers and cold beverage choices for customers, especially at the Marketplace location. The SWS location, for those who have been there, has a massive refrigeration section, and they handle that spectacularly. So we have customers coming to us from other competitors because ours is cold, and any of you who walked in from the parking lot today would prefer to have a cold beverage when they come to the store, and we've got it ready for you. Low employee turnover allows for more effective Low employee turnover allows for more effective and advanced training, resulting in much higher customer satisfaction and repeat business. In my time here, I've noticed our staff is more and more able to greet customers by their actual name, and that's due to them staying there for a while and developing relationships with our customers. The liquor industry has seen a significant increase in demand for THC products. THC drinks sales continue their meteoric rise. We've had excellent results, and we do have an interest in expanding into edibles. I think one note here is that because of our training, we're able to offer low dose all the way up to what the maximum is allowed by law, where we see a lot of our competitors just focusing on the high end, the high dose. And by offering that spectrum of choices, we're best serving the community that way.
Mayor and Council, I think the one thing, as Bob said, what's the ask? So we're doing an update for 2024 on kind of what we're seeing in terms of trends and what, you know, our sales are. But we did want to approach the council again and say, hey, we have a couple years of information on THC sales. We're seeing how the trends are going. We're kind of seeing how other cities are operating, and ask if you are interested in exploring edibles. Either we could talk through it now, or we could explore it at a future work session. So I just wanted to put that out there, give you time to think about it. If we can maybe get some direction after this presentation, I think that's kind of our question to you tonight.
Twenty-four, 2024 bestsellers, this is always fun to look at. The bestseller has been Tito's with a handle, as they say. The leader sells well, too, but the handle sells the best. And no surprise.
And the Blue Mountain.
No surprise, warm weather brings customers for cold beer, and Coors Light is still the leader. There's some big brands that you're all familiar with that are really trying to crack that top three, and they're doing a great job, but right now, of course, Coors Light being the king still. Do we have any questions that I can help answer tonight?
Yeah, a question. Really, the loyalty program, how have you been able to leverage that?
Thank you for the question, council member. I don't know if I have a metric, but I can explain how it works. It's much more seamless than it used to be. The one that it replaced was a third-party and third-party administered loyalty program. That was very confusing. It caused us to leave the point-of-sale screen, go onto the internet in order to look up customer data and that type of thing, and it was cumbersome. Right now, it's integrated 100% with our point-of-sale system. In terms of how it helps with customer interaction, we train our employees to ask at every sale. Now, a lot of customers already come up, and they announce a loyalty member, you know, so we know immediately. But if they don't, we ask if they'd like to join, and that's the second benefit of this. Signing them up is super simple, and it only takes just a minute. And thirdly, how does it impact sales, and how do we use it to impact sales? We have a lot of tools within this new system, and so when you purchase something at Savage Liquor, you're going to get points, loyalty points, which will give you money off later down the road when you meet your point maximum. But we're able to manipulate that a little bit. So if we want to, say, move some older inventory, we can double the points on that. We can triple the points.
Okay.
So we can do a lot of cool things with the points, and if you go into Savage Liquor even tonight, there are several items that are double points right now. And that has, as we get that word out, it's fairly new to us, too, but as we get that word out, we do see the demand as we look at sales results month to month on the double points items, that that's really working well.
Any other comments, questions?
I will just say, as a loyalty member, which has nothing to do with what I buy, but as a loyalty member, it is a lot more seamless, and the staff does know, like, who you are, and welcome back, or, you know, and very knowledgeable about products, and if you don't know what you're looking for, you're trying to find something. So that is a big win, I think, from a customer standpoint. Put that hat on.
Thank you for that feedback, council member.
All right, I am not going to put the council on the spot, but I am just going to kind of throw out the ask there, how people are feeling about the THC's and the edibles, and we can talk about it at a work session if folks are feeling that. I don't think we're going to, we are not going to have the conversation tonight. If people want to have the conversation, we'll do it at a work session later, so.
I think we want the conversations, yeah.
That's my question to you, yes.
Yes, I would.
All right, I think there's your ask. We'll have that conversation at a work session later.
Mayor and Council, thank you for the direction.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, James.
Thank you.
Mayor, thank you, Council.
All right, we will move on to the minutes. Approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting from July 7, 2025. Are there any corrections? I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from July 7, 2025.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Bergstrom. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We'll move on to B, approve the minutes of the city council work session from July 14, 2025. Any additions or corrections? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Coughlin, seconded by Johnson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Public hearings, there are none this evening. The consent agenda. These are routine items of business that are collectively presented for approval through a single motion. A council member may request that an item be pulled from the consent agenda for separate discussion and action. Under personnel, adopt a resolution authorizing personnel actions for the city of Savage. Under police and fire, adopt a resolution acknowledging receipt of the Savage Police Department biennial mobile video recording audit, another audit. Under finance, adopt a resolution to approve claims listing. Under general, adopt a resolution approving a short-term rental license for Bonnie Labs and Jason Byer for their property located at 4562 McCall Drive for the period July 21, 2025 through March 31, 2026. And two, adopt a resolution approving a temporary on-sale liquor license for Laker Educational Foundation for an event to be held August 21, 2025. Is there anything that somebody wants to pull or ask questions on? Bob?
Item H1, the short-term rental license, I'm just curious, is that the first one that's come across our desk since we've, this is the second one that we've seen, okay.
Yes, I think this is number two.
Yep, Mayor Kelly and Councilmember Coughlin, we have, this would be the third application that we have. We have two that are approved, and then now we have this one.
Thank you. Just curious on our numbers.
Yeah.
Because when we reach our cap.
Yep. All right, any other questions? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Bergstrom. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, now to the exciting general business. General Business, consider adopting a resolution providing for the issuance and sale of $3,585,000 in general obligation improvement bond series 2025A. Matt?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This morning, the city went out and was able to have their bond sale at 10:00 a.m. Chris Hogan with Baker Tilly is here tonight to present the results of that bond sale. So with that, I'll turn it over to Chris.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. Again, my name is Chris Hogan. I'm here from Baker Tilly. That serves the city as their municipal advisor. And like Matt said, the city sold bonds this morning, $3,585,000, $3,585,000 general obligation bond series 2025A. Proceeds of those bonds will be used to finance street improvement projects and the purchase of capital equipment. The overall repayment term of this bond issue is 15 years, with one of the small street projects and the equipment being repaid over five years. The debt service on those bonds will be repaid with general ad valorem taxes and special So as far as marketing the bonds, we, when we started this about, well, we started a couple months ago, but in June, we were estimating what we call the true interest cost of TIC at 3.98. And then last week, we updated what we thought, how we thought the bonds would price based on the market last week, and our estimate was at a 3.50. And the results today came in at 3.50, so. We had, the city had six bidders. This is a list of the bidders that they had. They are ranked from the lowest true interest cost of 3.5035, which was Robert W. Baird, and the lowest with Raymond James and Associates. But from top to bottom, you can see how pretty close those were, which is always the product of a competitive sale. This is just a snippet of the bond pricing. So the bonds were priced, you can see the coupons are higher than the yields. What happens is that results in a premium. That premium is additional money in a sense that, you know, between the difference, you're generating a premium. In this case, we use the premium to reduce the borrowing amounts, so the power amount of the two street projects were reduced. And then the city wanted to keep the $27,874 for additional equipment that they had decided that they wanted to finance. So part of our rating, part of a public sale is going through a rating process, and that rating process is to get the bonds rated. And why do you get the bonds rated? Well, it's to measure the city's financial strength and their ability to repay the debt. It serves as independent third-party assessment for underwriters who want to maybe bid on the bonds, so it supplements the investors' due diligence, and the stronger the rating, the lower the interest rate. So S&amp;P, we did a conference with S&amp;P a month ago about, and we, the city, mostly the city, presents all this financial information and all this to S&amp;P, and they go out for committee, and they come back with a rating. So the city's rating was on these bonds was AAA, which is their current rating, which is the highest rating you can get. I just always like to provide a little bit of information from the rating report. So S&amp;P will provide a rating report, and I just think it's always nice for everyone to hear the comments that they have, and especially with such a fantastic rating, such as what the city has. So their credit overview, they noted that there's forward-looking management team, sustained maintenance of healthy reserves and liquidity position with very strong economic profile. Then they provide credit highlights, and I just summarize the ones that, just summarize some of these for you. So they identified diverse local economy with overall economic outlook remaining positive, supported by stable residential base and ongoing investment in infrastructure and community service, robust management practices with annual updates of a five-year general fund revenue and expenditure projections and detailed capital plan, formal debt, reserve, and investment management policies, and future debt plans for the next two years is not expected to materially affect the debt profile. And they always list factors that could lead to downgrade, not likely, but they do always put that in the report. So the only thing that they identified was budgetary performance weakens or debt and liability increases significantly. So based on the sale results today, I'm recommending that the city approve the resolution awarding the $3,525,000 general obligation bond series 2025A to Robert W. Baird and Company based on their low bid of 3.5035. And I'm happy to take questions.
All right, well, I'm just going to start with a thank you. I want to thank our finance department. I want to thank the rest of the staff in Baker Tilly and you, Chris, specifically, for all of the work that I know that went into this. I was fortunate this year that I sat in on a couple of these phone calls, and I got to sit in on the rating call phone call, and I just, the professionalism, but the expertise that everybody brought to the table was just terrific, and I just really wanted to acknowledge that because I think it's a big deal, and I think that plays into part on why we remain at AAA bond rating. So thank you, and thank you. All right, with that, do we have any questions, comments? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution providing for the issuance of sale and sale of $3,585,000 of general obligation improvement bond series 2025A.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, seconded by Coughlin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. All right, I think we're moving on to city council reports. Does anybody have any city council reports that they want to? Talk about? Bob, are you still with us?
I'm trying to think, what did I do the last couple weeks?
I always have to look at my calendar.
I gotta look at my calendar something. It had to be a meeting in there somewhere.
It is July.
Yeah.
A lot of times, there's not meetings in July.
That is true.
I-35 was canceled for July and August, so.
Oh.
We'll have nothing.
I will have a meeting with, oh, I just blinked on it. Brad, you just sent an email about it.
Is that Metro Cities?
Yes, Metro Cities on July 30.
Those are starting, yep.
And it'll be actually online because they're redoing, doing some remodeling for the League of Minnesota Cities.
Yep, redoing League of Minnesota Cities building.
So that will be July 30.
Bob?
Did I have something?
Yeah.
There was a grand opening on Thursday, the 17th, at Apricot Lane Boutique, and many of our staff were there, and council members, remember, Bergstrom was there also, and I didn't buy anything, but I know you did.
And I went back, too.
I missed out because by the time I got there, everybody else was gone, but there were a lot of people shopping, which I was excited to see.
So it was, it was good to be there with the chamber and see community support for another business here in Savage.
It will do well. I went back.
The clothes looked beautiful.
They are.
I love supporting that local business, so, yeah. And anything else, I think? Okay.
Well, I'll just add, our MVTA meeting is also July 30, so next time, we'll report on that.
We had a Savage Fire Relief Association meeting since our last one, and I think Brad sent out an update on how that's going with the dissolution and kind of gave everybody a heads up on what happened there. So I don't think I had any other meetings. I just have a couple of things to make sure everybody is aware. Tomorrow night, Treats and Tunes is at 6 to 7. Enjoy free ice cream and yard games. And 7 to 8, Kid Power by Miss Rachel. And again, it's at Wood Hill Park, 8901 138th Street. And if you forget where that is, look in your newsletter. How's that for a plug for the newsletter? The other thing I'm going to plug with the newsletter is right under that, it's Night to Unite, and I think there's still plenty of time to register your neighborhood parties for Night to Unite. It is absolutely one of my favorite nights of the whole year to go around and visit our neighborhoods and see our folks. And if you have a party with your neighborhood, get registered. If you haven't figured out whether or not you want to have one, do it, and then get registered with Jennifer so that we know that you're there. I will say that Savage traditionally has been a community where we have a lot of neighborhood parties, and I think it speaks volumes to what Savage is. And we are a community made up of a lot of little neighborhoods, and people care about their neighborhoods. So encourage people to sign up. I will also do a public service announcement that the Scott County Fair starts Wednesday, so Wednesday through Sunday, I believe. And one of my favorite things to go do is the draft horse competition. So if you've not been to the Scott County Fair and you have not watched the draft horse competition, you got to go. All right.
I will be a part of the Night to Unite, too. I talked to Jennifer and sent her an email to help out with that, so.
Very good.
I'll be involved with that.
All right, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Motion by Bergstrom, seconded by Craig's. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.